Russ, could you give the invocation, please?
Yes. Let us pray. Father, we ask your blessings to be on our time this morning. We pray, Lord, that you give us wisdom and guidance as we look at the agenda before us. We thank you, Lord, for an opportunity to serve our community in this capacity. In your name we ask, amen.
Vice Chairman and Serby, will you lead us in the pledge?
I would like to lead the Act of the United States of America. To the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bob and Serby.
Here.
Barbara Craig.
Here.
Russ Winn.
Here.
Chairman Curlender.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Roger Brunswick.
Here.
Next thing is to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Motion.
Deacon.
Discussion. Roll call.
Bob and Serby.
Yes.
Barbara Craig.
Yes.
Russ Winn.
Approved.
Chairman Curlender.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yeah.
James Worster.
Yes.
We have in the past reserved public comment until the end, but there's going to be a continuance. Is there any public comment? There being none. Mike Fegan?
Good morning. Mike Fegan, Community Development for the Record. As is stated in the Land Development Code, both the staff and the applicant are entitled one continuance by right. At the previous April meeting, staff used theirs. The applicant is requesting to use theirs for this meeting. Attached in your packet is a copy of the continuance form. I had spoken with Audrey about this because typically with these continuances, you continue it to a date certain. They left that part blank because they're, to be perfectly honest, they're not sure what they're going to do from here. One of the things I discussed with Audrey is how that affects the advertising and all those types of things. And the understanding is that as long as they are clear that they will have to pay for re-advertising, the hearing date, when and if one is decided, that they can go ahead and request the continuance to no specific date certain at this time, which is what they're doing.
So the one issue with the continuance that I would ask my fellow board members, they are asking for an indefinite continuance rather than a three-month, two-month, you know. How do you feel about that? Is everybody okay with that? Comment? Any discussion?
Well, I don't have a problem with it. It seems a little odd, but they are willing to pay all the additional costs associated with it. So for that reason, I guess I don't have a problem with it. We'll just treat it like a new applicant at that point.
Mr. Worster.
I assume that if we change the rules somewhere along the line as to an application, that these new rules would apply. Their having been on file would not preclude a change. Let's say we change something tomorrow, which would affect their application. Would they have to comply with that new change?
Counsel.
I think that's a good question. There's an application of facts to the law that I would need to have more information. For example, if we were making it more restrictive and it was targeted towards theirs, there might be a situation, if we're making it less restrictive, that they want to avail themselves of the law. It might be a totally different fact pattern.
How does the rule of zoning in progress affect this?
Well, we don't have a moratorium. Zoning in progress relates to, it's a case called Smith v. Clearwater, and it relates to when we are actually formulating policy. At this point, I don't know if it, unless Mike wants to tell me of something.
Okay.
I don't know of any policy that we're working on that would apply to this particular matter. There could be, but at this point, I don't know the application well enough to know.
So it would not apply in this case, is what you're saying?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
But if it's indefinite, they could come back three years from now. Say I was on file.
That seems to me bizarre, no?
That's the problem that I have with it.
I'd like to ask, why is this to the applicant's advantage to get an indefinite thing rather than decide sometime in the future and reapply? What's their advantage in that?
Well, I don't want to speak for the applicant, per se, but based on conversations that I did have with them, I don't know if this necessarily looked at as an advantage from their standpoint. Just to cut to the chase, they, this isn't a giant conglomerate that is going after this particular property. It's a family-owned operation, and they are talking amongst themselves if this is really the right place to do this and if this is really the right thing that they want to do at this particular location, given all the additional information that has come to light over the last few months. They did not want to put a specific timeline or attach a specific timeline to make that type of decision for themselves. There's nothing in the code that prevents them from doing this, provided that they understand that when they come back through, they do need to pay the advertising costs again. It would be a different story if the application had not yet been found sufficient. If the application was still not sufficient and there are still outstanding items that needed to be addressed as part of the application review and submittal process, those are tied to specific days. You have X number of days to reply to staff's sufficiency concerns. If you don't, your application is considered withdrawn, and then you do start from scratch, you pay the application fee again, and you resubmit again. They've done all of that. They've made it through all of those items. This is strictly for the hearing process itself. So with that in mind, if the application, I'm sorry, if the advertising fees are paid, they can come back at that time and give it a shot before the board.
Well, to go back to the other question, if they come back three years from now, can they do that? I mean, indefinite seems like an awfully open-ended.
Right. If I can, and this goes back to Jim Worster's question. Let's say the plan development has a traffic analysis, and the TIS was done in 2018. They come back and three years later, I think it would be fair game for staff to say, we need a new TIS. We need to make sure the property ownership is at the correct, you know, because things could happen since the last time we checked these things. So how much of the plan development application they have submitted and what is still probative and relevant is probably a question we'd have to look at in three years from now if the three-year thing happened. In this circumstance, as Mike has explained to you, that might not be the case. It might be a case where they have asked him for a continuance, and they're either going to decide whether to proceed forward or withdraw. And they just want time before they actually make application to withdraw, which they have a right to do before having a hearing.
And sort of to elaborate on that, was just, one of the items that they are looking into and exploring is the possibility of a third application. So we had the rezoning and the special exception. Now there's a possibility they may need to spit for variance as well. And obviously, the goal would be to bring all of that before you at one time as opposed to bringing it before you in pieces. So, you know, if that is the path that they end up choosing, they want the adequate amount of time to do what they need to do to get that application together and to get it in line with the other two.
And they may change it to a plan development.
Sure.
And to answer your question, Mr. Worster, one of the quick fix items is like, for example, if they needed a deviation in lieu of a variance.
Right.
And they would have to provide the public benefit or demonstrate the public benefit requirement. Right now, we just have the requirement that you can't do harm. They could do that, and I think that would be something we would require them to justify if that circumstance occurred. I mean, this is a great hypothetical because you have so many different things that could happen, and I have to ask you to wait and see.
Thank you.
I guess another question might be, they don't own the property, right?
They don't own the property.
But the guy who owns the property might have some problems knowing that there's sort of an open door here that might last forever, that might encumber his ability to maybe talk to someone else about using his property.
Sure.
And I think it's fair to that individual to have an open-ended kind of situation.
Sure, but, you know, but that goes to the behind-the-scenes conversations with the seller and the buyer.
Right.
Time to work all of that out because that's a very real concern, I'm sure. This all plays into the fact that they don't want to be tied to a specific date at this point.
That's the risk that the property owner or the applicant takes, obviously, on any property, times the obviousness.
When you talk about advertising, exactly what kind of advertising you're talking about, like they have to pay for advertising for?
The newspaper ad.
Oh, I see.
That's required, and then also to repost and renotice the property itself with the correct hearing dates.
But again, if it's only a few months, you might not send out a newsletter to people within 375 feet. But if it's three years, you're going to want to send out a letter because there's going to possibly be new people in that area.
Sure.
Is our option either no continuance or indefinite? Can we do something in between?
No.
It seems to me that it's a bad precedent for us to give an indefinite.
Absolutely.
Continuance. There ought to be some limit on what we're going to do. Three years from now, A, it could be a different board; B, it could be a very different world. And I think that maybe that's, that we ought to establish something as being reasonable.
We have that right.
Okay.
And I raised the question because...
I would suggest that we exercise that right.
Mr. Worster.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow a continuance to September of this year, the September hearing.
You have some serious hearings on September. I, if the applicant is ready, that would be great, but I'm not, I don't think, September is coming up pretty soon.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
I think Mr. Fegan addressed a part of the concern on the applicant's part, is that if they do decide to go forward, one of the things they're going to need to do is file a new application, and that application is going to need to basically reach the point where it is scheduled before you so that can all be brought together. You may want to look at a continuance of possibly six months for us to come back and give you an update on what's going on. I would assume at that point, if we're not already scheduled, there better be a good reason as to why we're not, or at least far along in the process. Excuse me, but two or three months probably isn't going to give us enough time to get this in a place where it needs to be to get in front of you, especially with the workload you're going to have over the next couple of months.
I'd like to amend my motion to December.
That would be six months.
Yeah, this year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, six months. I'll go along with this six months.
Discussion?
I, rather, December's 31 days. I would say by end of year. That's the only change I would make. Put a date to it, December 31.
Well, I think that we could bring it back to you in some form or fashion at your regularly scheduled December workshop or at the rescheduled date, whatever, whenever you happen to move that to, if you do move it.
You could treat it as a status hearing, so I'd like to get an update and see if how it's progressing. Or if we receive notice that it's withdrawn, you don't have to put it on the agenda for September.
And if we receive notice it's withdrawn, we'll bring that to you at your next meeting after we hear word.
Great. So there's a motion to continue this case or to adjourn it. Which is the correct language?
I think you're just deferring it.
To defer the case until December 2018. There's a second, there's been discussion. Any further discussion?
Just one point, make, on Roger's point, he said 31 December. Yeah, don't, we shouldn't just say December. Give it to the end of the month and I'll be there for six months.
Or to our meeting, that's what. Normally, you would just do to your scheduled meeting day.
Okay, scheduled meeting, all right.
As zoning board members, if I could get you to please speak very clearly into your mic. So David Theriaak is on the phone, and he's having trouble hearing everyone, so please get very close to your mic when you talk. Okay?
Thank you.
Whoever said that this is kind of a status update that we all want to provide to you by December is relatively accurate. We should have this either scheduled or ready to be scheduled by then. If it's not scheduled, I would assume that you would hear word from us saying that the application has been withdrawn. There's no reason for it to extend beyond that, so.
So the motion on the floor, John, to be clear, is that they will come before us, no later than December, ready to proceed.
Yes, sir.
That's the motion. There's been a second, there's been discussion. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Bob and Serby.
Yes.
Barbara Craig.
Yes.
Russ Winn.
Yes.
Chairman Curlender.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Worster.
Yes.
Okay, so the matter is on for December 2018. The next item on the agenda is the subcommittee. At our workshop, we were tasked with providing changes to the law that we deem appropriate and then to report back to city council. So the subcommittee has been meeting. In addition to that, the city attorney has prepared a green sheet.
Oh, that's in here.
And she has done some work on the quick fixes. I think it's appropriate, before we adopt anything, that the full zoning board decide the questions on the amendments. So with that, I would ask whoever from the community development, Jackie, are you going to do the, are you going to do the presentation?
Yes, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, we do have David Theriaak on the phone. What you have in front of you is just draft language and concepts. It's not in ordinance form. They're just, they're ideas that staff has vetted internally, and we've prepared some concepts for you to discuss today. And again, that's based on what we heard at the workshop. We reviewed the videos, listened to the topics that were discussed, and then, as it was mentioned at the workshop, it was always council's intent to get direction immediately at that Wednesday meeting after the workshop on some of those quick fix items, interim changes and long-term changes. So that is why the green sheet was prepared and presented to council at the first meeting in June. So you'll see some of the topics that we discussed at the zoning board subcommittee meeting, but you will also see topics that council had given direction for staff to start working on. So what you'll find on the second page of the memo, memo, sorry, are the four concepts that will eventually turn into draft land development code amendments, and they're topics regarding neighborhood information meetings, deviations, the double counting of density and intensity, and then the ex parte communications. So I would like to discuss those in those orders, if that is okay with the board.
Please.
And again, as an open forum and discussion, however you would like to proceed with those. And so with that in mind, we can go ahead and start with the neighborhood meetings. And Dave, I don't know, feel free to chime in at any time.
Thank you.
Okay. So what we do with the neighborhood meetings is we wanted to go ahead and provide an easier avenue for the public to go ahead and learn about applications before they're filed, but then also at a point before they're scheduled for hearings. So what you'll see is generally the purpose of a neighborhood meeting, the applicability of that section, and the applicability is, you know, for those types of land use or rezoning applications that would come forward, and which one of those applications would require the neighborhood information meeting requirement. So again, if you want to go ahead and take a look at those, what we thought was most appropriate would be any application that required, or sorry, that was for a future land use map amendment, any type of rezoning action, whether it be to a conventional district or a planned development district, and then any special exception. So those were the uses, or sorry, the applications that we felt would be probably most appropriate to go ahead and bring to a neighborhood information meeting. Some of your smaller zoning actions, such as a variance, you know, for those, it could be a small neighborhood, or sorry, a small resident in a property in a neighborhood, and that might be a little too much, too much of a process for some, an individual property in order to go through. And in looking at what other jurisdictions do as well, such as, you know, Collier County and things like that, variances were not part of that neighborhood information meeting requirement, but those other rezoning applications or land use map changes were.
Before you go further, I have a question. Conspicuous in its absence is where an applicant requests a change to the comprehensive plan. Why isn't that included?
Well, a future land use map is a change to the comprehensive plan, it's the future land use map in itself. We talked about doing, or making it a requirement for text changes, but the challenge with the text changes is that in most cases, a text change could affect property all over the city. And how do you go ahead and capture that in a neighborhood information meeting based on the way the ordinance is written? If you're creating like a smaller little sub-district where it's boundary-specific, I think that's definitely something that could be accomplished, but otherwise, if, so for example, if we're changing the text in a general commercial land use classification, typically, your general commercial is all along US 41, Benita Beach Road, portions of Imperial Parkway, and how does an applicant host a meeting when you're changing something that's so broad?
Here's my concern. An applicant files a request for a comprehensive plan that affects other landowners, not simply his or her property, but other landowners. Under current law, as I understand it, nobody's entitled to notice of anything, and that change can be made. It's not a zoning change, it's a comprehensive plan change, but there's no notice. So if someone comes in and requests, they're going to be requesting such a change, isn't it fair to have some kind of notice to them?
Well, again, if it's a future land use map amendment, we are actually changing a specific piece of property, we do have notification requirements.
Right.
Granted, it's not a neighborhood meeting currently as it's adopted, but our administrative code does require the noticing, mail notice, and then statute requires newspaper notification.
I have another question, if I could. Conspicuence in its absence also is the definition of what a neighborhood is, and it concerns me to make a change like this without clarity as to what we mean by the neighborhood that's going to have the meeting.
If I can go back real quick and then maybe Jackie can handle that question. What we propose to you are minimum standards, hard and fast rules, which there are no exceptions. They are the floor, as an example. Applications, and you're dealing with an application now that would have fallen into this, I'll call it gray area, where there was a text change, but there was a specific area in which it applied. In those situations, there is nothing in this proposed regulation that would stop staff or city council from requiring a public meeting before the application proceeded. And in all honesty, if we see an application like that, that will probably be one of the first things that we request if this, if this action and proposal's changed, because the direction of the council will be very clear. They do want the public to be informed prior to an application being processed and prior to decisions being made where things go too far down the path for serious changes or discussion to happen. So what, I would like to have this board thinking is, what you have is not the complete and exhaustive list of all situations in which we could or should have a neighborhood information meeting. What we propose to you is all situations that, under any circumstances, these applications must have a neighborhood information meeting. Other applications may also be required to have neighborhood information meetings as deemed appropriate, depending upon their impact and depending upon their request.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay.
So the next question was...
Yes, Member Craig. So what we did is we tried to, I wouldn't necessarily say define a neighborhood, but define who the participants or that we're trying to reach or that we want the applicant to reach. And that's in subsection C2 for notification. And again, just as a starting point, we recommended that it would be all property within 500 feet of the property that is requesting the action. And then we would also require that they notify the master association if it's in a community that has an association, so then they can go ahead and notify other members of the neighborhood as well. Again, looking for examples in other jurisdictions, some use the 500-foot regulation if it's in an urbanized area. If it's a rural area, they expand that to 1,000 feet, just because obviously, when you're in a really urban area, your notification would be much larger versus if you're in a rural area. So those are just some of the considerations that we brought to you today. Again, we don't have to stick with that, but that would just, that was one of our recommendations, was to start at the 500. Currently, right now, our code requires notification for 375 feet when we do the notification of the public hearings. So for the neighborhood information, we thought as a starting point, we would recommend 500 feet. But again, if the board thinks they want something more substantial, that is definitely up for you to recommend.
Continue.
Okay. Going back up under the procedures, there's time and place, and what we wanted to do here was explain to applicants that, you know, and the location where you're going to host this meeting, it needs to be reasonably convenient into where the neighborhood actually is. They need to arrange the time and place for the meeting. We set forth guidelines in terms of the times that we think are appropriate, along with some, I wouldn't say deviations, but if alternatives, if, for example, there was a hardship for whatever reason, that the meeting couldn't be held between those times. So we put that into place in terms of what we thought would be appropriate for a time and place to host that meeting. Okay. Moving on, the conduct of the meetings. What we tried to achieve here is based on what we've heard from the public, of what areas and topics do we want the applicant to discuss with the neighborhood. So we listed in the conduct of meetings the types of information that we felt that the neighborhood would want to know about. So you'll have the proposal in itself, what uses they're requesting, the densities, the intensities, if there's a proposed master concept plan, we want them to share that with the neighborhood. The review process, so the public understands what the review process is with the city. And then also, we want to make sure that there is an avenue to have open dialogue with the neighborhood and the applicant so they can have a really good question-and-answer session, so we, so the neighborhood feels like they were heard and that they were actually a part of the process. We also wanted to make sure that the materials and the exhibits that they were showing were definitely in a medium or scale that people could actually see. Number four pertains to staff attendance. It's not mandatory that staff attend. Some jurisdictions don't require that staff attend, some jurisdictions do. Usually, it's always beneficial for the project planner just to kind of stand in the background and observe, so that way they're also aware of the neighborhood concerns. But item number four serves as how staff would interact at those types of meetings. Five goes into the written summary of the pre-application neighborhood, and this goes into, based on the neighborhood information meeting, it's almost like the minutes, if you will, of what transpired at the meeting. We want the applicant to go ahead and put that into a narrative and submit it as part of their application for when they file and if they file. So that is the purpose of the written summary. Then we also have, and that's for the pre-application before they file. Item six goes into the written summary of post-sufficiency. So once the application is sufficient and it's getting ready and scheduled for hearings, so when they have their second neighborhood meeting, we too want a written summary of those items that transpired at that meeting. Item seven goes into the response to the summary, and this goes into making sure that the neighborhood feels like that they're truly a part of the process. So it's the opportunity for if the neighborhood wants to provide any written narrative for staff to review and consider, and also the boards, because that is a public record, there's an avenue to do so. an avenue to do so. That summarizes pretty much what we were wanting to discuss with you in terms of concepts for the neighborhood information meeting. If you have anything you would like to add, or changes to some of the recommended figures or numbers, we'd be happy to discuss those.
Is there any discussion?
I have a question about this. Staff may attend a meeting. How about consideration of, for a large project? And our definition of large would need to be determined, that it would be a staff requirement that they be at those meetings, so that they really get the feel of what's going on. And maybe we could say large, being magnitude of acreage, something over 15 acres, and I'm pulling that out of the air, that you would be required, attendance, frankly, reading the minutes of the meeting cannot totally reflect what went on at the meeting, in my opinion. And staff has to be aware of the feelings of the populace.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
It seems to me that this thing is really huge, and certainly if I was a developer, I'm looking at a whole new set of obstacles that I have to overcome before I even make an application to the board. And if I know I'm gonna be going in front of a bunch of neighbors, most of the, they're uneducated into the, you know, the nuances of land use and zoning, they're gonna be looking at the architecture. You know, they're gonna be talking about parking spaces and roof colors and that type of thing, which puts the burden on the applicant to have created, you know, a full-blown completed project, whereas, when he comes to us, as we've seen, many details on the architecture have not yet been resolved or completed. And it challenges the idea that there is a public information process. You all advertise, so that everybody knows that the application is in progress. They have a chance to come to the meetings. They have a chance to be heard. And I think that if the zoning board feels that the public is not sufficiently aware, they have not had a sufficient opportunity to learn about the project, it's something that the zoning board could always say, "Well, we think you should have a neighborhood meeting", rather than mandating something like this, you know, upfront, which puts a whole new level of involvement, time, and expense, and the burden of the applicant. It seems to me that it's, it might be a good weapon, you know, a good tool to use, but it seems to me that it's not necessary to mandate it as a pre-application requirement.
May I weigh in on that issue, please?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was my recollection that David Theriak proposed that at the workshop, and I'd like to hear from him.
As somebody who represents developers, as well as local governments, I am a fan, a very strong supporter of neighborhood meetings before an application is submitted. It does a few things. It gives an opportunity, before the project is actually designed, to have a discussion with the neighbors. And to show up with everything already firmly in place, then it's really perfunctory. A good neighborhood meeting before an application is filed is an opportunity for the developer to say, "This is what I'm thinking about doing on this property. And here are my concepts. What are your concerns?" And you typically don't have the level of detail that you get at the seminal stage, and this is an opportunity for the neighbors to say, "Well, I have a concern about the dumpster over here," or "I have concern about," if you're going up, "loss of privacy. Can we look at how you're handling buffering and setbacks?" And the applicant and the neighbors have an opportunity to discuss, trying to resolve issues before they're filed. It also puts the neighbors on notice, very early in the process, that something's coming on board. And what we've done with this particular set of regs is we have a pre-meeting, and we have a post-meeting after the application's been filed. So after the neighbors have met, the applicant has completed their application, the application's been deemed sufficient, then the applicant meets again with the neighbors to go over the plans that have been submitted to the city, in order to once again provide notice and an opportunity for the neighbors and developers to work out issues. I can tell you, I just had a neighborhood meeting about two weeks ago in Walton County, and my client, it took me a month to get him to agree, it was a voluntary annexation, neighborhood meeting, it was not one that was mandated by code. And after we held the neighborhood meeting, he was really glad he did, 'cause he was able to do a couple things, one of which was to meet his neighbors and have a dialogue, but also paint the picture before the neighbors paint the picture. 'Cause what you find a lot of times is folks hear a project is coming, and they fill in the blanks without knowing the details. And a developer who does the pre-meeting, the pre-application meeting, gets to fill in those details. And it's not the parade of horribles, that if you don't paint the picture first, the neighbors will. So I recommend to all of my developer clients, regardless of whether there is a regulation in place that mandates or not, to hold the neighborhood meeting. And I can tell you, it reduces the number of conflicts that we ultimately have when we go through the application process. You can never satisfy everybody, but I've seen it really work well, where you whittle down to a few folks that just simply wanted to agree to anything.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments about neighborhood meetings? Now, I would ask Ms. Vance, is this something we should take a formal vote on, or is it something, what's your recommendation here?
I think before you take a formal vote, and I do think you should take a formal vote to see a consensus, remember, this is kind of pre the public hearing process. It still needs to go to a local planning agency, which by statute is charged with the duty of reviewing this, and they'll give their input also. I think it makes sense for you all to vote on it, so council's aware of your, you know, of your opinions as to whether or not. But I don't think a vote would make sense until after you've looked at each one of these to say, "Yes, I agree, 500 feet," or, "Let's name it, instead of calling it a neighborhood meeting, call it a community outreach meeting." You don't have to do that, I'm just making up, you know, whatever, you know, because sense of neighborhood might be something that is the seriousness, you know, because when you're doing a commercial project and your neighbors are all commercial users, is that a neighborhood? Yes, no, I mean...
But we're voting on a concept only, right now, and it's not for us.
Correct.
As you pointed out. So what, I think...
I think any recommendations, if you want it in here, I need to know earlier in the process than later.
Right.
Can I bring up another concern that somebody else has already brought up, but I think it's important here? We're a community that is a part-time community for a large percentage of people who would be in the neighborhood. So holding an information meeting in August as opposed to February, two entirely different things, so if we're gonna actually make this be some effective outreach, if you're going to be around seasonal neighborhoods, I think you have to keep that into, take that into consideration, or it won't be what we're trying to make it be.
So add a seasonal requirement?
Well, that may not be the case everywhere. I mean, there are some neighborhoods that are more permanent neighborhoods, and there are some that are really, you know, in my neighborhood, there's like fewer than 10% of the people there now, so.
You have touched on what I'll call the third rail of public involvement in Lee County. And it is the battle of those that live here full-time versus those that come here seasonally. Who has the ability to comment? Who has the ability to participate? And how should meetings be arranged? There, I will call it, there is passion on both sides, and both sides do have strong points. What I caution is working in a direction that would stall progress for a period of potentially six to seven months. That's where my concern lies. However, the point you raise is a valid one, and one with many, many supporters. And so you cannot ignore the fact that most residents in some communities, sometimes 90, 95%, are not here in the summertime. However, the city runs all year. So finding that balance is, I will call it more art than science, and something that I think that we probably have to show a little common sense to as an application proceeds. I think trying to think of all potential situations right now will simply lead to failure, but it is a point that we must keep in the back of our minds.
Is there a way that you can put wording into this proposal that encourages the staff to take into consideration the nature of the surrounding neighborhood, and that would include whether people are here then?
I think that...
And it might include, what concerns me is to define neighborhoods, I mean, to have neighborhoods be required to be included, but not defined other than this footage, which might mean that this house gets to go, and the one next door doesn't get the information about it, and they're both equally impacted. I don't see how that works, but...
Both of those topics. On your last point, that's why we're looking for property that's located within an association, to notify the association. So that way, if you're within a community and you just don't happen to be within that particular phase or portion of the community, you still would get noticed, theoretically through the association. The second point to your language, actually, I was gonna say, I hope you craft that generally, and I think you did a good job, and say that meetings should take place, to the greatest extent possible, allow for the greatest participation of the residents. And something along those lines, I think, is entirely appropriate.
I think you've seen that debate over the high school recently. Got people that are here six months, we raised our kids, we want a peaceful place. Then you got others in the neighborhood, "We are raising our kids, we're here year-round." Now you see this clash, you know, so you see the challenges of that, you know, as an example of the high school going up.
And it's, it's very interesting to see how that's progressed, at least in Benita Springs. With a larger population and a larger full-time population, you do have a lot more people looking for year-round services, year-round opportunities. I remember as a kid, everything closed in August and September. I mean, restaurants, it wasn't uncommon for them to close their doors and show back up in October or November. But now you're starting to see that that's such a rarity that it still catches people off guard. However, we do, even with a larger permanent population, have a larger seasonal population. So there is a balance, there is an art that needs to be taken into account there.
So, any further comment? How should we proceed? Do we have a motion to accept the concept?
That Jackie went over with this?
Before you do that, right, I think the first part is, do you want us to amend what was provided to define neighborhoods and add a seasonal requirement if the project may be impacted by predominant number of property owners being out of the immediate area?
Well, and I think that your language that you had spoken about was very good in terms of...
Just in general, that, I think, if that kind of language is not in there, then the developer might say, "How come you're requiring that of me? It doesn't say that." But if it's there and it allows you flexibility in applying it, it also gives notice to the developer that you may apply it. And I think those are good things to be clear about what the...
I mean, if the objective is to have a project that is fully vetted, it doesn't make sense to have the project vetted when nobody's available to vet, you know?
You're not gonna accomplish your purpose that way, basically. In fact, you're gonna make people angry, "How come you did it when there was no one here?"
But I think, just as a practical point, I think what this particular language does is it allows us to maybe move or adjust the meeting date by a month or two. What it's not gonna do is move the meeting dates or proposed meeting dates by six months. So if you're kind of on the fringe or the shoulder time, I think that would allow us to either move something up or move it back, and it gives us some language to enforce that. But what it won't do is if somebody files an application the beginning of June, or wants to file an application the beginning of June, we won't be looking to delay them until November.
Can I ask one other question? And this is just a what-if sort of thing. My experience has been with people coming to meetings, even when it is quite of high concern to them, is that very few people actually show up. What do you do if a developer calls a meeting and nobody comes? Does that count as calling the meeting? I mean, we have to not punish the developer because people aren't interested, and that would seem to me a very real possibility, so.
Well, what I've found is people do not come to say they support something. They will gladly come if they oppose, but you don't seem to see the equal amount of attendance or enthusiasm for support. So, yes, ma'am, in other jurisdictions, I know have been involved, and Wisconsin's been involved, in cases where there's been public information meetings in other jurisdictions where nobody shows up. And that counts as your meeting. You scheduled, you advertised.
I just wondered what you did in that.
But we also are looking at two meetings, so if something...
You gave people an opportunity to respond.
Yes, sir.
I guess they vote with their feet.
Regularly.
Regularly.
So, is there a timeframe before, when this public meeting should be called? Beforehand, how much notice should be given? Because as Barbara has said, there are a number of people that aren't here off-season, this time of year, for example, and some people, if they're passionate enough about it, will make an attempt or a point to be here for the meeting. They'll travel down from wherever they are. I don't know how you accommodate everybody, but, so how much time?
Currently, as it's drafted, it's 10 business days.
Is that enough time?
For your out-of-state folks, probably not.
I think that, I would recommend that that be extended, that there's gonna be a public meeting a couple of weeks anyways, maybe 30 days. Is that unreasonable?
30 days is not, especially for your more seasonal folks, so 30 days could be appropriate. What do you think, Dave?
30 days seems a little bit long, that it bumps timeframes for the developer submitting the application, and 30 days out, sometimes folks simply forget about it. What about 21 days? Three weeks? Most jurisdictions, as I see, do 10 working days. I mean, that's essentially two weeks, and I understand your concern about out-of-town folks, so maybe we extend that.
Question for David. David, with your background, throughout the state of Florida, the northern counties, you reside in Tallahassee, for example, do you have this issue with a high influx of seasonal residents?
More so in Walton County than over in Leon County, or even Gadsden County. Walton County has 30A, it's a very Rosemary Beach seaside, and you have a very large amount of folks at that second and third homes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I'd like to ask Dave a question also. The need to have the staff at the meeting, the city represented, how appropriate is that? It appears to me that developers are developers, and some might pick up, as your developer did, on what was presented at the meeting that you described earlier, but others may, if nobody's around, might not include that. What's your opinion on staff coming to the meeting? Being required?
I've seen very, very few local governments mandate that staff attend. One of the concerns is, is you don't wanna get staff in the middle of the negotiation, and you don't want staff put on the spot of trying to review a proposal before they've even had it submitted. So in most jurisdictions, if staff goes, they're basically a neutral observer. They typically do not provide... They typically do not provide any information regarding the code. They may provide information just about timing and process if asked, but you, you really don't want to get them having a lead role. And, and I would not recommend that you mandate that staff go to every neighborhood meeting. Your staff might run away.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we, I think, is there agreement that the time be extended to-
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days. Twenty-one total days.
Is that calendar or business?
Calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, all those in favor of, should we have a motion to adopt the concept as amended to hold neighborhood meetings as described in the materials furnished us?
With the additions that we've made here?
With the additions that have been made here.
And would we be adopting this or would we be recommending it?
Recommending. This is a recommendation only. Can we have a roll call?
Discussion.
You, you wanna have, okay, discussion, sorry.
I'd just like to say again that, you know, as a community that prides itself on government light, I think this is just another unnecessary la- layer of hardship for an applicant. It's been, been said that these meetings are supposed to happen pre-design and that's probably a good thing. If, if, if I was a savvy developer, I might wanna have a neighborhood meeting on my own in order to smoke out where the concerns are gonna be before I go to the board, you know, before I make my application. A smart developer seems to me would, would, would do his research, do his planning, get to know the ground rules, talk to the people who might be opposing him, find out what their concerns are, so that he can craft his final application to the board in order to head off those kinds, and respond to those kinds of concerns. I don't think it's our business to mandate these, these meetings. I think it's up to the developer to do his own homework and clear the way. If, if we feel that the neighbors are inadequately informed, I think there are other things we can do. We might wanna suggest community meetings at that point, but I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves in requiring such a onerous requirement.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Bob and Serby?
Yes.
Barbara Craig?
Yes.
Russwin?
Yes.
Chairman Kellender?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
No.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
Jim Worster?
Yes.
Okay, so when we, in terms of process, before we go on to the next one, will what we do here today be presented to City Council?
From what I understood with the subcommittee, what we wanted to do at the last meeting was go ahead and vet this as a group and then bring back, probably if it's ready to go into ordinance form, bring back, so in this case, the neighborhood information meeting, we can bring it back to you in a, in an ordinance form and if you think that is-
Why would we not just go to the LPA at this? I mean-
Right. It goes to the LPA.
I mean, we could, we could committee it to death if you want, but it makes sense just to schedule-
It's the LPA's job, not our job.
If we're calling it a quick fix.
I'm confused about that. I understand about the neighborhood meetings, this is, this is a different sort of kettle of fish here, but the other proposals that we had that came out of the workshop that we then discussed in our committee, we, I thought we were bringing them back for the purpose of getting them underway, not going, I mean, I thought we would have an ordinance to vote on today that we could then send to wherever you send it next. I thought it was going right to the council since the council had been involved in-
So here's where I see the agenda going from after today's meeting. One, we're blessed that today you didn't have any cases, so we could actually spend our time and devote it to this. Some quick fixes are going to be more technical in nature, such as the schematic design, although Jim Worster had seen that draft back in January of last year. That's one that David needs to work on, give his blessing and then council's good to go, so I'm not adding that to the quick fix section. The other ones that were quick fixes, where I see it, I'm actually drafting the ordinance as we're speaking, so I put your comments in here. I see the neighborhood meeting potentially ex parte, that was something that Council Member O'Flynn, I did not have that on my list, but Council Member O'Flynn did, deviations from the general zoning regulations, which was, I hate to call it the quid pro quo, but that's what-
That was, and the double dipping.
And the, right, the double dipping, which we changed the allocation of density intensity.
And most critically, the need to have a public interest or public reason, public protection reason for making a change, not, or against-
That's the deviation from the general zoning regulation.
Okay, 'cause that was the one that I think Mr. Therac said at the meeting was a very easy and quick fix. I hate to see us wait another month to do that.
Right, and let me go, ancient zoning law, I mean, this is way before, before any discussions that I normally have on zoning. There's a case called, I think it's Davis versus Sales. I mean, anytime they're making any zoning change, it's supposed to be a public improvement or an improvement to the society, to the community. You're not supposed to make zoning changes to be things that are disruptive or horrible for the community, although sometimes something that's a benefit for social welfare, people might not necessarily feel that way while going through the process. But that, that emanates in every decision anyway. Deviations is where we have the language saying you can't do a public harm and that's where David said, that's a little off-alter, you should shift it, that there's actually a benefit to be seen by the public. At which point, is that your next one?
Yes.
And I'm gonna let Jackie go into that next one.
Okay, all right. But can, can we, before we do, what is our process here?
I think as, as the subcommittee and Chairman Kellender, since you were led with the charge, if you think that a certain topic is ready to go back to council for direction for permission to advertise, going to the LPA, please let us know and we'll go ahead-
But this, let, let's just stay with the neighborhood one for a second. That has to go to the LPA?
Correct, it's a land development code change.
And the other ones do not?
No, they do.
They all do.
They all do?
By statute.
Okay.
How come then you just said if we wanted it to go right to council, we could do that?
Well, in terms of for direction, 'cause the process typically is if there's a land development code change, we bring it to council for permission to advertise.
Okay.
And then it starts with-
Right, and, and so what's going to happen is July eighteenth, I'll take it to City Council, whatever we get done today for permission to advertise. And we will also schedule the hearings for August one and August fifteenth. We coincide those dates so that Mr. Therac is definitely available for the fifteenth. The local planning agency, I believe, meets August twelve, August tenth. Now, this is sausage, no, it's legislation.
August ninth?
August ninth. This is sausage, meaning this is legislation, it can be ugly, there can be sentences that are taken out, sentences that are put in, and that's always subject to council, making those changes right up to the, the moment of adoption. So, just wanted to be aware of that, too.
Just to be clear, this is gonna go to council?
For permission to advertise.
For conceptual approval?
For an ordinance that's drafted, that's why I said I started drafting the ordinance. Once I get the text of this language, then I can put it in the ordinance for title block, all the formalities. So the formality stuff is being handled right now.
One point, although the vote was six to one, I think Richard Donnelly has raised a question. And I think that when it's reported to council, that his point of view should be heard as well, you know, just to let them know that we had a strong dissent here. Not an unreasonable dissent and it should be heard.
Sure.
So can, can we do that or should I be there to do that?
If you would like to do that, you may, or staff would be happy to do that.
I feel strongly that when we have a, a strong dissent, that it should be heard.
Let me ask a question. It goes in front of City Council. City Council makes a decision, changes sentences, whatever it is, it should come back to us.
No.
No.
They're the final decision maker.
Suppose they don't agree with it. Suppose they change this whole format?
They, that's their prerogative, sir.
That's their prerogative.
And that's why you have a local planning agency-
We're advisory and-
Right, and that's why you have a local planning agency whose job is to make sure, they're the ones who are the overseers of the land development regulations. So when, many, many years ago, when we would talk planning, we would call short-term planning the zoning and we would call long-term planning the comprehensive, the comp plan stuff, the local planning agency.
Great. Just to put this in perspective in terms of process, the reason why we're having this discussion is because of the joint workshop that you had with council. And out of that workshop, there were a handful of items. I say a handful, a lot of handsful of items. And some of those were considered quick fix, although for quick fix, we spent a lot of time dealing with them. And so now those quick fix items are working their way through and as, because it had started with you, we are bringing it to you to look at before it goes through its normal process. Most land development code changes, in fact, all land development code changes, start with a permission to advertise with the city council, a hearing before the local planning agency, and then ultimate approval with, with the city council. This one being a little bit different because of, of how it got its start and, and whose ideas they were. And we thought it was wholly appropriate to bring them back to you for your, for your review and discussion.
Can I, can I make a point about that? There was really unanimous agreement on the quick fixes that are the three that we talked about. I think the neighborhood meeting one was more, there was more discussion. I don't recall whether there was unanimous or, there was strong support for it, but I don't recall that. What I wanna make sure is when this goes forward to the council, that the three quick fixes that we looked at as being ways to start now, making our process more in the public interest and more clearly that, that all three of those things address that, that they don't get taken down by confusion over the others. So I would like to see a green sheet that has those three, either each one individually that's voted on, or those three and not have the neighborhood meeting be part of that same green sheet.
Would you like, I'll tell you what, we could, so, all right, I'm a cheapskate. First of all, if we do an ordinance and we advertise an ordinance and we take it out, it's still stuck in the title block, but that's council's prerogative and they could take it out. But what I can do, as long as, like I say, I'm a, it costs a couple thousand dollars every time I, we, I have the clerk buy advertisement space for a display ad. So I don't like giving the newspaper money, although they probably get mad at me for that, but that's different.
We're gonna soon have to find a different way, I'm afraid, but okay.
Well, no, well, state statutes are state statutes, you're not gonna find it that quickly, but what I would do is I can write up three ordinances, so each one is a separate and distinct ordinance. Would you prefer it to be done that way as opposed, that I'll be happy, because sometimes I do it that way anyway.
I just would like to see as much as possible of this go through and I would not like to-
Well, in that way-
I mean, I'd rather have one piece of it than have one piece take everything else down, I guess.
Well, and if, if it's standalone, the advantage of doing a standalone is that each one could be taken for its element and if one piece of legislation needs additional-
And they don't depend on each other, so there's no reason for them to be glued together, is my thing.
Right, you can keep them in because they fall under the same subject matter rule because under Florida constitution, I have to have same subject matter, but it doesn't mean I have to put them together. I can, you know, separate them, they're not tied to the hip.
I think what we can do is handle the presentation and discussion as separate and distinct items. Now, how they're advertised, how the ordinance is written, I think we have to follow more a legal path than a presentation path. But I think your concern is that when we present this, it's, no, I, but I, you're right, you're correct, but I think that what we can do is at least state, these three items came from your joint workshop where there generally tended to be unanimous approval. However, now that you're seeing the language, we wanna have a discussion and we wanna do them with each individual item separately.
Okay, so let's move on to the next item.
The next item is the deviation section and what this section was intended to address were the concerns about establishing a quid pro quo if a developer or, say, an applicant is requesting a deviation. And then the other part is to address the removal of the language that references a detriment. So that's this one section, which is four dash three twenty-six, again, in concept. And what will happen is based on the direction with this section here, there's another section that I discussed at the subcommittee meeting in the application section, that will then go ahead and add, that third prong is what I call it, for the public benefit.
Let me see if I can shorten this, because I think there, there are two questions here, right? Right now, the statute says if it's not a detriment, and we wanna change that, that there has to be a benefit. That's-
We don't wanna give that other alternative.
Right. Am I correct in?
That, that's one portion, but then also with the-
Quid pro quo is the other portion.
Correct.
Which is if they're asking for a deviation, they have to give something in return.
Correct. But also, our current code states that when a deviation is requested, I call it the prong test, if you will, and the first one is, it has to enhance the overall plan development. And then the second one, and I'm paraphrasing, is, has no adverse impacts on the public health, safety, welfare. And so that's where, that's in the application section of the land development code. I think we're interested in adding that third prong about the quid pro quo. So you have to meet all three to go ahead and-
We don't want it to say that it doesn't have an adverse, we want it to say that it has a benefit.
Correct.
And that's what they do here, if you read, it's four point three two six, it's there.
But that's not what she just said. She said prong two in the application is that it does not have an adverse effect.
Well, you would take that out of the application.
Right, and so, so based on your direction from today, we'll go ahead and address that section as well.
Okay.
In ordinance form.
But it still needs to not have an adverse effect. I mean, it needs to have a benefit and an adverse effect. I don't think it's a-
Well-taken.
Yeah, but the word in the, in the law is or. We want it to be basically, it should have a public benefit and not have a-
And no adverse, exactly.
And it's the or allows it to say, well, it's not gonna hurt anything.
Right, it needs to be a conjunctive, not a subjunctive.
Yes, exactly, you got the words.
Okay, so is, is everybody comfortable with those changes?
Yes, baby, right.
Okay, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Robert and Serby?
Yes.
Barbara Craig?
Yes.
Russwin?
Yes.
Chairman Kellender?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
James Worster?
Okay, thank you. The third item is the handout that was delivered to you probably yesterday by email, but then hand-delivered today, is the allocation of density and intensity for mixed-use development. So this is to address the double dipping concern that was raised by several members of the zoning board and by city council. And so what this goes into is how do we define the double dipping? It goes into the, well, you segment the, the property into the residential purpose section and the non-residential. Specifically states that, sorry, when there's, when you have site infrastructure such as right-ofways, open space, surface water management, how you could go ahead and prorate that land area in a mixed-use development, so it's based on a prorate share. And then there's another factor where we wanted to go ahead and address, and these are just, these are options for consideration. And this addresses current policy that's either in the conference of plan, so in your downtown area, right now, there's policy language that allows the city to go ahead and exclude the first-floor commercial calculation if you're doing a vertical mixed-use building. So we have that memorialized on option A. Option B pertains to the pending Terry Street sub-district that went to city council for first reading and will go to second reading on Wednesday, because that sub-district allows for the double dipping in the policy language in itself. C through the rest deals with existing projects that either received a planned development zoning that allowed or was utilized the double dipping policy, if you will, and at various stages. So, for example- So, for example, if we have a project that received its local development order approval by a certain date, would we hold them accountable to this provision? If we have a local development order that's currently under review. So, for example, the Crest at Benita Exchange, which was a planned development that was approved in 2016, they are currently in for development order review to go ahead and build that multi-family component.
Excuse me, what, repeat that? Which develop, what was that?
It's called the Crest at Benita Exchange. It's the multi-family component that was in the Benita Exchange plan development, right off of Quail's Nest.
Off the interstate at...
Correct.
Yeah. Benita Beach Road.
Correct.
Okay.
So they're currently in for their local development order review and they're addressing staff's first round of sufficiency comments. So we would need direction on whether or not that this policy would apply. The next item pertains to plan developments that were approved with that policy of double-dipping. So there's a couple, so Benita Village, I know, had taken advantage of that. Angler's Paradise granted therein for a master concept plan reinstatement. So those would be, again, areas that we would need to know at what point does this policy apply. Then you have plan developments that are currently under review right now, whether or not it's a new plan development or an amendment to a plan development. That would be, we have a case called Benita Boardwalk. They're in under review where that, this could have a policy implication on their entitlement. Item G goes into a master concept plan that was approved prior to a date that we're anticipating this could be applied. So again, this could go into the Angler's Paradise, master concept plan reinstatement application. Same for item H, kind of deals with the same thing where if we have a master concept plan that was approved or if it's pending, where they're utilizing this double-dipping provision. So what this is intended to do is to define the double-dipping, the prohibition of double-dipping, when mixed-use applications come in, how we'll go ahead and calculate their density for the residential portions of the site, their FAR, Floria ratio, for the intensity for the non-residential uses of the site. Again, the common infrastructure, how we'll go ahead and prorate that. And then the final section is to, if you are in agreement with that policy language, how would that be applied to projects that are currently under review and at what stage?
Swisher.
I'd like to suggest that these double-dipping new requirements, so to speak, be effective as soon as possible. The reason, this, one of the reasons this has been such a problem is the obvious use of double-dipping at the, one, project you just mentioned, at Benita Exchange, where they magnified the volume of residential units, including all the commercial areas. And so the sooner, the better. And if you could tell us how soon we can implement this and apply to projects such as this, it would be very helpful to me. Benita Exchange is one and the Benita Village is another one that have really taken advantage of double-dipping, in my opinion.
Again, we, I think, and so that's where the options, there's projects that are in the pipeline, that are legitimately in the pipeline. David did a great job of outlining your options of where, you have up to G on it. It's not intended for you to choose all of these, but it's intended for you to choose anything. Obviously, again, application of the law needs to come in and come in with the application of facts of where people are in the pipeline. Benita Exchange is an interesting, the Crest issue, because the, it really was how the developer decided to go forward made a difference. It wasn't how the zoning board did the calculation. It's how the developer decided to phase the project so that he would not be on the hook immediately for certain improvements that ended up getting him caught into the quagmire in that case. It's not because of how you guys calculated density. Are you understanding where I'm going with that? Okay.
It seems to me...
What were these recommendations that Mr. Theriaque came up with?
That would be subsection E in front of you.
A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
And, right.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So we have to apply a date.
Yeah.
And also not necessarily pick everyone on that list.
I noticed that there's a sort of striking difference between some of them. Approved and pending seem to be sort of a dividing line. And legally, it would seem to me more difficult to apply a new change on approved projects, but much less difficult to do so on pending projects. So I'd kind of like to hear from Mr. Theriaque whether, you know, legally where we are on this, can we apply this change to already-approved projects or not?
That's a gray area. The, and that's why, and you're absolutely right. I listed projects that were approved or development orders that were approved versus those that are in the pipeline. Those that are in the pipeline are easier to apply new regulations. The case law is a little bit split. There is, there's a line of cases that state that the regulations that are in place at the time that the city council makes its final action on an application are the regulations that apply to the application. There's also a couple old cases, though, that state that the regulations that are in place when the application was filed are the ones that apply. I think the current trend is that you get to apply the regulations that are in place to pending applications at the time of approval. The ones that have been approved, I don't have enough knowledge about what's being captured. And I don't have enough knowledge about whether development has occurred on some or all of the ones that would be captured that are approved. It is a finer line to try to apply new regulations to PDs that have been approved. I think it's even more difficult for a development order that's been approved. But it depends on the particular project that you're evaluating. It's fact-specific. And we would have to look at what's being captured if we attempt to apply it to things that have been approved.
So basically, the easiest way to proceed here would be to say it applies to pending projects, but that we wouldn't apply it to already-approved projects.
Right.
Absolutely. That would be your cleanest, because then you're not doing a fact-intensive evaluation of what's been approved and whether or not there are any vested rights based upon expenditures and reliance, whether there's been any development, whether it's possible to take away units. Because I can see a scenario that because of double-dipping, when you remove the double dip and the acreage was based upon, or rather, the dwelling units were based upon that double dip, then you're taking units away and that's going to be more problematic. Pending is easier, or you even have the option to say simply, we will apply this new double-dip regulation to any application filed after the date of adoption of this new reg. So you've got the full spectrum of approved, pending, or prospective only.
It seems to me that in terms of opening ourselves to lawsuit, that trying to apply it to approved ones would be the most likely to put us in that position. Maybe not on all, but on many. But the pending is kind of a middle ground. It captures more than just what's as of the date of when we pass this, but it allows those who have not had approval to be subject to the new regulations.
Well, let me throw some examples by you, because these are things that can legitimately happen. So we talked a little bit about Benita Exchange. In Benita Exchange, there were calculations done. The developer decided to work in phases of the project because he did not want to put in all of the improvements at one time, because it's expensive. I mean, people have reasons. Normally, we allow vesting at 20%, you know, if they have a development order. So he had development orders and he did act on it. He can go drive on that frontage or drive on that road that he built. So, I mean, it's, there are physical improvements on that property. It's not just paper improvements. But he didn't get any development orders for the phases in the back. And now he would be subject to those calculations.
The property, most of the parcels have been sold.
Right.
So the out parcel number one, which is, actually, if you've driven by there recently, you've seen it's been cleared, that is for a small retail strip center. So that development order was issued, so that retail building is under construction. The multi-family in the back is a different owner. And actually, they own the majority of the association that maintains all the infrastructure. So they'll be responsible for putting in the rest of the major backbone infrastructure, which is the surface water management system, the preserve area, and things like that. And then there's another out parcel that has also been sold to the same, I think the same out parcel one owner. And then the developer that actually put in the infrastructure originally, he still owns the, one of the last remnant commercial parcels.
I would just like to make a comment. I think it's dangerous for us when we're making a general rule to take into account specific examples of issues that might be before us under that general rule.
Okay.
So I would prefer that you give me...
I'll give another example.
Yeah, I was going to say, give me fictitious examples that I don't have to be concerned.
Well, I can give examples and there's, there's a federal case called Rehard. And we use it in the moratorium. And this community, prior to its incorporation, was very divided, whether or not that parcel was vested or not. I mean, that would be cocktail discussions. People had, it was in the news every day in Benita Springs. It was a huge issue here. And in that case, the government lost. It wasn't the city, it was prior to the city's incorporation. The government lost and you could have floored, I worked for that particular government and I was shocked because I felt, you know, they had such flimsy evidence. I mean, that was my, you know, review and analysis, that the government should have been right and it should have been able to apply everything. And unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on your opinion, the federal courts disagreed with the government and were able to have good standards as a result of it to look at, for making these determinations. But you have to apply the facts and the law. I mean, you can give recommendations, but I guess one of the questions is how risk averse are you? Do you, David is more than happy to go and litigate each issue, but there's an expense to that, that, you know, not just his time in life.
My concern isn't just the litigation. It is, it's a sort of that ex post facto thing. If you already have a approval for something, to now say we're going to send you back seems to me just basically an unfair way to proceed. So, but the pending one seems to me to be one that you could with it legitimately and say, you know, you're not done and rules do change.
And we do have, we have exhaustion of administrative remedies through adminis...
And you could say if there is a hardship, there's a way to get around that. We make exceptions to everything, but that could be addressed.
David, what we may want to do in the allocation of density is reference the city's appeal process so the case can go to city council. So we have exhaustion of administrative remedies. Does that sound good to you?
It does. It depends on where we draw the line.
Right. And that line is subject to council making, but it should be council who makes that call.
Well, we don't make final decisions anyway, so that's right. So I think that's great.
But we're all agreed that we're going to do pending only, right?
Well, I don't know. That's just my opinion. I think somebody else has to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about approval, which I think is appropriate. We, the zoning board and the council approve a project that comes in force with conditions and deviations. Although these approvals are based upon an acceptable submittal by the developer to obtain LDO. In my opinion, approval should be the issuance of the LDO. Anything that has not been issued as an LDO on a specific project is still subject to conditions.
I think that's for next meeting, right?
Well, yes, there does need to be changes to chapter three. And you say LDO, that's like chalk on me. It's development order, DO, in our wording. LDO would be like a sidewalk or something little.
All right, thank you.
Jim.
But that aside, that is something that needs to be changed and you're absolutely correct.
We're dealing with that. And we'll come back with recommendations for you to consider.
I think what...
All right. Well, let me go just a little bit further. Tell me how that affects what's in the process right now.
Between the pending and the...
Well, I think what you're trying to bring up, member Worcester, is, so, for example, because I like to use the example, so Benita Exchange, they have an approved plan development that allows the double dip. They have an approved master concept plan that allows the double dip. And when they submit for their local development order, they utilize that plan development and master concept plan to show how they're consistent with the land development code. So I think that's what you're saying. It is important. I think the LDO is really important for you because, just because they have an approv, if this code says you have an approved plan development and approved master concept plan that allows the double dip, then how's that affect when they apply for their development order? I think that's where you're going.
That's correct.
Want to say something, John?
That was my point. He started speaking before I could get to it, so thank you.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Can we have a roll call?
Wait, let me make sure.
Sum it up.
We need to have a motion that, that can sum it up. And I'm not sure where exactly we came down, but when we're trying to vote, I think on part E, what would be the potential options that we would like to make exceptions to the general rule that we've done up here? I don't know what to say about A and B. I don't know personally enough about them, so somebody would have to give me that. But I would suggest from C to H that we say that anything that is pending, so a development order approved would be left in, but the pending one would be taken out. A plan development approved would be left in, but F would be taken out. A master concept plan approved would be left in, but it's pending, would be taken out. So that you could potentially apply this to anything that was pending. But I don't, I really can't speak to A and B. Somebody else has to persuade me as to why they should be acceptance, and I don't know.
Sure.
But there's, there's a lot more besides E in this.
Well, no, I said A and B. What I would do is leave in as potential options, A, not D, E, not F, G, not H, and not have others. If I were to make a motion, that would be what I'm doing, but I'm not sure what to do about A and B. So somebody has to give me the reasoning for why these two, the first floor of a building which contains both residential and commercial within old US 41 and properties located within the Terry Street sub-district in the old US 41 corridor. I just don't, I mean, I haven't been around long enough to know what the reasoning for making exceptions for those would be, so.
Item A is currently in your comprehensive plan and item B is going to be voted on tomorrow.
Okay, so that basically those would be obvious exceptions.
Yes, ma'am.
Assuming B goes through.
Assuming.
Well, then, I would be comfortable making a motion that say we use this form as the motion, but include in the section E, A, B, C, E, and G.
A, B.
A, B, you said C?
I said A, B, C, which is a development order approved before July 2nd. E, a plan development approved before July, whatever our date is. And G, a plan, master concept plan approved before, but not include those pending things.
Well, that's, to briefly say, those that are pending would not be included.
Right, that's what...
Those that are approved would be.
Right.
And I, that's, that's the dividing line that makes sense to me legally, but I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know about the current things to know how that works.
So here's what my notes reflect on this issue. Your zoning board recommendations is to adopt as soon as possible to eliminate calculation continuing. Two, zoning board discuss where the application should not apply, i.e. where there are existing approvals and make applicable to where an application is pending. In other words, you're going to prohibit double-dipping where an application is pending. In other words, you're gonna prohibit double dipping where an application is pending. Depending on factual circumstances. Three, discuss adding an appeal for exhaustion of administrative remedies, language in there. And then I just have a placeholder for your vote, if, if you're recommending going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest we would be told what the earliest date we can fill in here for X would be.
July.
It depends on what the council does.
July is pretty close, Jim.
Well, I understand. Let's put something down, let somebody change it.
Well, I assume what they're going to do there is, whatever date this is adopted would be the date that would be put in here, is that right?
Yeah, I don't know.
So July X, 2018, if this is voted on in July, it would be whatever date it was voted on and adopted.
It can't be, because July 4th kinda knocked us up for a loop on hearing dates.
So if it's August, at the August meeting, it would be whatever meeting was adopted.
And then our charter requires it, the 30 days effective date. Now, we could put it, I mean, this is where we would treat it as a zoning in progress, because obviously, we have...
Right.
...regulations. So if we have a Smith v. Clearwater, we can do it, and that's where having the administrative appeal, so council would end up telling us, "Yeah, closed call, no," you know, you're out of order.
So if you have a zoning in progress, it accomplishes your purpose? Okay. Let me try again. Can we, can we have a roll call to approve the motion as stated by Audrey?
The motion would be to go forward with an allocation of density and intensity for mixed-use development, with the zoning board recommending to adopt as soon as possible to eliminate the double dipping or calculation continuing. I didn't wanna call it double dipping. Discuss where the application should not apply, that is, where there's, you don't apply the double dipping rule, where there are existing approvals, and make it applicable where there's applications pen, pending, depending on factual circumstances, because applying the law to the facts. Discuss adding an appeal for exhaustion of administrative remedies.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Was there a first to the motion?
Roll call, please.
Was there a first to the motion? We got a second, but I'm not a motion maker.
I, I will make the motion, since I'm starting to know.
I thought you did.
I sort of did, but you put it in much better language, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Robin Serby.
Yes.
Barbara Craig.
Yes.
Russ Winn.
Yes.
Chairman Colander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Worster.
Yes.
You guys are doing great.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is the ex parte communications. And I apologize for the smaller font, I just wanted to go ahead and capture the comment.
I thought it was a test.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was an eye test.
I'm so sorry. So, and this came up again at your workshop, I'm not going to, I'll, I'll let the attorneys take the lead on this one for describing the changes that are proposed here and what's stricken through. So David, I'm gonna give you the floor.
I did not hear you, Jackie, I'm sorry.
If you would like to explain the ex parte draft, just because I think it's more of a legal topic than...
Do you want me to...
Go ahead, Audrey, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll, I'll start with Da, and then it's David's draft, and we'll go forward from there, and I apologize again. So section, all right, let me start a little earlier. Consistent with our charter, we obtained Lily County Land Development Code, and city council made, in 2000, made immediate changes. And one of those changes is based on a state statute, which allows you to remove the presumption of prejudice from ex parte communications. Now, I've met with zoning board members individually when you first started, so this might be a long time ago, but we talked about ex parte forms and disclosure, and so that people, when they have their hearing, have the ability to, you know, obtain the disclosure, and they're able to know. Now, I know that, only because Ralph Brooks has brought the issue forward before, if you are a participant but not a party, you can't necessarily cross-examine, but parties can cross-examine, based on, you know, ex parte communication and what is out there. It does provide transparency, because you're able to see what people have talked about. And we currently have the section 4-30, I probably should go in it. The full section is what the statute requires, which is, we define, the local public official would mean zoning board members. So this applies to you, it's not just city council. Except, I think this change might be only, no, it would apply to you. I did do a quick read. It allows for you guys to have the access, because again, there's some constitutional provisions, it's the right to public access to your elected officials, but here's where you guys are actually being, kinda like judges, you know, the quasi judicial proceedings. And then, the procedures section, and again, 4-30 is more than what you're seeing here. 4-30 has, and the procedure's pretty much right out of the state statute, as far as the substance is not presumed prejudicial if it's disclosed. Now, it doesn't have to be disclosed in writing, it can be disclosed normally through a verbal mean, and some do. The public official has the ability to, but not mandated, to read the written communication from any purpose, from any person. But if they do provide it, it won't be made a, if it's provided to the record. So like, say you get an email, you forward the email over, and we've all had that conversation, right? Good. Make sure I get, a lot of head shaking, 'cause I find out there's a lot of emails that you guys have been hiding, I'm gonna like, have a heart attack. And, well, it could happen. And you are, you can conduct investigation, so, and, and the perfect example would be zoning board member Worster. He goes to a site, and he uses his knowledge and expertise in engineering to look at the site, and you've told me where I'm wrong sometimes, on, I remember on one particular site. And you can do that site visit or investigation, or even utilize your expert opinion, as long as you make it part of the record. And the change that we are talking about in this section would be a requirement, it's one of process, that would go in the procedures, and so David put it in the access permitted section, but it, it's a procedure portion, and that's fine, that you will not attend, and I'm using you, meaning city council members or zoning board members, will not attend scheduled meetings with any person except for a city employee or attorney representing the city regarding the merits of a quasi judicial matter without the attendance of the city manager or her designated such meeting. And the city manager or her designated shall take notes on the city's ex parte communication form regarding what was discussed during such meeting. And at the conclusion, they'll file that paperwork. The city manager, so we're shifting the burden now to city staff member, not to the elected public official or to the zoning board member. To the city employee who's taking those notes shall provide it to the city clerk's office, where they keep them on file.
Is the word "scheduled" in there?
Yes.
To, just so that you don't have incidental contact issues?
Right, and that, and that is exactly a concern that I had, I raised to Mr. Theriak, was, my guess is, you go to the grocery store, you go to your clubhouse swimming pool, you take a walk on the sidewalk, you're going to have a meeting with people, and they're going to tell you exactly how they feel about a particular case, if they know you're on the zoning board.
And that's an ex parte communication?
That's an ex parte communicate, meetings with staff are ex parte communications, you know? Meetings with the neighborhood group, meetings that are, I mean...
So why is the word "scheduled" in there?
We put "scheduled" in there, so there was more of a mens rea.
Okay.
Okay, so let me go for the non-lawyers in the group, because talking, well, you're pastors, you probably know Latin better than me.
I know Greek better. I know Greek.
Oh, okay. Substantive criminal law, you want to know that the thought process, that you had the mind to commit the act. So if you're actually physically attending a meeting, it's not the same as if you were at, on the sidewalk, and somebody came by.
By accident, just by happen chance.
Now, you still have the reporting requirement, if you, in happenstance, talk to somebody about a case, or you do a site visit, you still have the obligation to disclose this on the record, but this is an additional requirement for when you're having those meetings. Now, the applicant, like I said, has the right to cross-examine. Participants have a right to look at it, as well as any member of the public. It's a member of public record, and of course, it's a member of public. All of you can go and look, see, has Larry Kurlander met with anybody, you know, Barbara Craig can look to see if you met with anybody on a particular case, or, you know, there are things out there. And that's where it can get a little fuzzy, as well as, and the, like I said, the mens rea issue, the procedure. This is applying an additional process. It's not required by state law, but the statute makes it very clear that you are allowed to adopt additional procedures. My recommendation during the zoning workshop would be, if you have this procedure, make it as a resolution, not make it as a code, because once you adopt it in a code, you could have somebody unintentionally committing a violation. And that, I hate, I wish to say it never happens, but it does happen. But that's, I mean, it's a policy, what you decide, it's options that I bring forward. So I want you to be clear on that.
I think I would like to just sort of underscore some of the things that happened at that workshop, and where this comes from, and why. And I think there were concerns among the council members there, some of whom wanted to make it, you couldn't have meetings with any applicant who was, had a application before the zoning board that would involve a quasi judicial kind of decision. There were others who felt they should be able to do this and just report this way. And I think what they were trying to find was a middle ground, where, okay, go ahead and have your meeting, but let's not have it just one-on-one, but have it somewhere where it actually becomes a recorded meeting that can be reviewed. I mean, we can't review what went on in a closed-door meeting between one member of the council or one member of us and somebody who's the applicant, and you don't really know. But if there's a staff member there who would be responsible for summarizing what happened to that, that could, what happened at that meeting, then other people could see whether an applicant has tried to influence in some way a member of the board. Now, this assumes people will follow all that, these rules, and of course, there are always exceptions to that. But I looked upon this as a middle ground way to try to make sure that if you're going to meet, and I think the problem was, you know, with applicants, but with the public, 'cause I was the one, well, what about the public? They are supposed to be able to meet with their representatives, and I was carefully informed that in a quasi judicial kind of circumstance, that is not necessarily the case, though I'm not sure that many members of the public would understand that distinction. So the public could also meet with, but they would, if they were going to have a scheduled meeting, say, of three people from the neighborhood who wanted to come and say, "Here are the problems that I have with this," it would be with someone present. And I think that was, it was an effort to find a compromise ground, which seemed to me a reasonable compromise. That's just my read on it.
Is there any further discussion? So what we are considering is a change to the ex parte rules, to now require, in a scheduled meeting, a staff member be in attendance. Is that a fair summation of what we're doing? Okay, is there any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Well, a question. That scheduled meeting, if there's gonna be a staff meeting, probably needs to be in this building, I would imagine, or maybe, or not? Or does it matter? Doesn't matter?
I don't think it matters, I mean...
It could be at the site. I mean...
It could be at the site.
There's lots of times you would want to have it at the site, because for visual learners, that helps.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So what I'm putting down is discuss that there's a variety of ways for, to proceed, and I put in parentheses, i.e., from not permitting ex parte communication at all to having meetings, and saw this as a middle ground, and zoning board voted blank to recommend going forward with the recommended change.
I think that sums it up.
That's the motion and the second, is there discussion now?
Discussion. I just wanna be clear, as the attorney pointed out, if I should run into somebody at the grocery store, this would be an applicant, or, that has an interest, and they start to talk to me about this, I'm gonna have to say, "Time out."
You still have to disclose the communication.
I have to disclose the communication.
You have to do that under current law, we're not changing.
Right, right. Okay, so I don't have to say, "Time out, we need to schedule..."
No.
"...a time and a place."
Right, no. You would still need to disclose that communication. Hopefully, you know the person's name, because sometimes when you run into the grocery store...
I never do.
It happens to all of us. But if you could put, you know, whatever you can say, concerned citizen X communicated on such-and-such date in Publix, you know, why I should approve this, or why I shouldn't approve it, you know, so that somebody can at least find out a little bit. They can question you as to what the communication was.
What's the consequence if that ever, I mean, somebody didn't do that?
Okay, so we have an ordinance, that's a good question.
I mean, I don't...
Yeah, it, it's interesting, too, because I looked at chapter 286 in Hall, which is an amazingly short thing. I don't think there could be removal from office by the governor. The governor can remove you for sunshine violations. So if he did a complete, but this is a separate section from that, and I don't think that could occur. As far as disclosure, the, I hate to say, the worst-case scenario for us would be that it would overturn the case, and somebody would be entitled to a new hearing. As to personal sanctions, city council could decide, you know, as the qualifier, keep you on the board, take you off the board. I don't think there's criminal, but there, it is an ordinance violation, and you have an ordinance violation, it could be treated as a misdemeanor. I mean, is the worst-case scenario. And the consequences, now, depending on what kind of licensure, a misdemeanor can be a big issue. I don't know, for railtors, if it means anything. For engineers, it certainly does.
I don't believe so.
Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to ask one question about that, if you're caught in that situation. My reaction would be, this is a hearing that is quasi judicial in nature. I can't respond, but you have an absolute right to write your opinions and have them submitted to the record. That seems to me, if, if what somebody is trying to do is get their concerns about a case, what often citizens don't understand is, the really effective way to do that is to write a letter and have that letter become part of the record of this case.
It is, but remember, a letter in itself, without having somebody tender it as sworn evidence, is not substantial competent evidence, regardless of what the merits of it is. If it is something where it actually constitute, the most important thing in a case, that might have the good political, and I'm not disagreeing with you politically, you're right, but you still need, for purposes of court, substantial competent evidence, which is testimony, or, I mean, and a lot of people, what they like to do when they testify is, they like to put it in writing, because then they have their thoughts set out, and it's much easier for them.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Robin Serby.
Yes.
Barbara Craig.
Yes.
Russ Winn.
Yes.
Chairman Colander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Worster.
Okay. That concludes going over discussions for the land development code changes. If you would like, the last item that we just, we had, that we would want to see if you wanna discuss, is any types of improvements, enhancements to our, our staff report, how you like to see information displayed, what you would like to see in staff presentations. That came up at the tail end of our subcommittee meeting, so if you'd like to discuss that today, we can go ahead and...
The, the suggestion that Mike Fegan made was, I, I, I would like him to talk to you about that, I think it was really good.
Sure. Mike Fegan, again, for the record, one of the suggestions that came up at the subcommittee meeting came from staff experience and, and board experience of the fact that the first time you really get to hear the applicant's side of the story is at the hearing itself. the applicant's side of the story is at the hearing itself. You get a staff report from staff ahead of time. You understand where staff is coming from. Staff vets it against the code. You get the staff perspective. One of the things that was discussed at the, at the subcommittee meeting, which would be a benefit to the board and from my perspective, from staff as well, is to have essentially the applicant provide a staff report of sorts, justifying their application. Because when you read, especially the plan development section of the code, the burden of proof is on the applicant. It is not on staff. And I think the way the current system is set up, and this was something that was discussed, particularly by Board Member Craig, it, it can provide the appearance at times that staff is sort of lobbying for the applicant in these staff reports. Because you're not hearing the applicant perspective at that time. It's purely the staff perspective and the staff analysis based on the code. So for an example, it would almost be set up in a point-counterpoint style. There's, we do a traffic review. They do a traffic review. And our review is done based on what they have provided. So we all start from scratch. We all have the same sort of template or outline, if you will. All these sections get analyzed by the applicant and submitted as part of their normal application submittal. And staff gets to review those justifications as well. I, I think it would help, in a sense, provide a more clear picture of the applicant's perspective, their justifications for why they think what they're doing meets the intent of the code. And then the staff response to that becomes part of the staff report. So it was just a suggestion that was, for now. And, and a change like that could probably be made without having to tinker with ordinance sections or code sections. A lot of that can be application submittal requirements that we just tweak on the application itself.
Yeah.
That would be very helpful, I believe, for all of us.
Absolutely.
And, and the other thing I'd like to add to that, we would like to get that in a little more timely manner, if possible. And I know sometimes, you know, it's last minute, you're still under the deadline. But, you know, when we get large files.
Sure.
Less than a week before.
Yeah.
It's a time issue for some of us, for me it is. So I would like to add that provision. At least a week before our hearing, at least. More, longer is better.
I understand. And I sincerely apologize in those scenarios where we can't get it to you a week ahead of time. Sometimes there's a lot of moving parts behind the scenes, unfortunately. And also, in a previous meeting, we had gone over certain exhibits that you all want to actually have physically in your packet versus what can be on file with the city clerk. And I'm gonna start that with the case that's going to be before you on, on Monday, which I hope to have the packets to you tomorrow morning. So, thank you for that. And we'll definitely work forward on this new format for you.
Do I have Monday on my calendar?
The 25th.
You do, the 25th and 26th.
It was a special meeting for the Terry Street project.
It was, it was the one you voted on last night.
Yeah, I guess we did.
I won't be here.
Which is.
Yeah.
That's a nine o'clock meeting?
Nine o'clock.
Correct.
I'd like to say that I thought this was a really excellent suggestion that Mike came up with. And I would suggest that not only this proceed on paper, which I think is very important, because then I can read what the applicant says, and then I can read what the staff's assessment of this is. But that we do this in the public presentation, because I think a lot of the perception, not just by the people on this side, but by the people sitting out there, is that the staff is working for the applicant. And so it might be very helpful to have the applicant present his version of the case. And then to have you come up and give your critical review of it, where you think it has strengths, where you think that it needs help. And then we can tell, and the public can tell, what it is that you're doing on our behalf. And I think so often, when you present the applicant's position, it looks like you're cheerleading for the applicant. And it's not your fault for that. That's the, that's the structure in the process that can, you can do an awful lot with just changing that structure and that process, I think.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Jackie?
That was all that staff had on our agenda today. We definitely will reconvene on the 25th as the zoning board for the case. And then the subcommittee meets on June 26.
June 26, there's a subcommittee meeting.
Okay, I'm all set with that, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a question about what was presented today.
Just one?
On the, on the green sheet, on page 14, at the bottom, the storm water release rates. And this is pretty much in my domain, I guess. But I'm curious as to the status of Benita Springs relative to approval of the release rates based on storm intensities. Obviously, the hurricane season's coming on us again. And I believe Collier County's presentation is, representation now is that they go a foot above the 500-year storm event at a particular location. And I say 500-year storm event, just to put that in perspective, the state of Texas has had three 500-year storm events in the last three years. So it's, it's just an engineering number that's thrown out. But what's the status of Benita Springs relative to the, and this never, I've tried to bring it up before about the elevation, and it said, oh, that's still gonna be covered in the LDO. Well, what's the status of the requirements currently relative to finished floor elevation?
We're 50% better than the county. I think we're one and a half inches, right?
Are you asking for the, the current code standard? Or where we are in the process to address the change?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Theriak again. In light of the fact that the quick-fix amendments are done, do you still need me to attend this portion? Or can't I free to go?
I think you're free to go.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody have a question for?
No, thank you. We'll convey it to David.
Thank you, David.
If there's any issues.
Have a good day.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, I guess where are we in the status of review of that requirement?
Okay. That actually, John Dolmer will be the best person to let you know on the status. I've been on the periphery, if you will. I know we have reached out to Collier County and spoke to one of their staff members, who then referred us to someone else in regards to how they came up with their current regulations on the, the rates. So, and I know John also, they had mentioned that they've also spoken to the district. And they're the ones that actually referred us to this gentleman at Collier County. So we have to speak to another department head. And John may have done that already. He's just not here. But I do know that we did have a discussion with Collier County last week on who to talk to, so we can get a better understanding of how they came up with their information, who they utilized as a consultant, how it went through the process. So staff is working on that right now.
So currently, the city of Benita Springs has not revised any requirements relative to the first-floor elevations.
So under our building code changes, which went to council for, well, it's going to council for permission to advertise tomorrow, we will be, I mean, right now, the floor building code requires you to build one foot above your finished-floor requirement. It's one foot of freeboard. But that doesn't address your, your storm water design. Because obviously, that's.
So there's no change currently?
There currently is no change in our Chapter III standards.
Your point is well-taken.
Oops.
We have, we really have antiquated a formula for, do we use a 25-year flood, or is it?
I don't know. I would have to look at that before I give you an answer. I don't want to guess.
I mean, it's.
Well, there's no question that raising that elevation is going, is going to be.
And we use one and a half.
A great benefit to future.
The county uses one.
Happenings in a hurricane situation or a heavy storm event.
So it's.
That's not just up to us to change, is it?
No, that's not up to us. Is there anything further?
Just one quick question. Is the change that Jim was talking about, when that is made, can that apply to applications that are in the process? As long as they don't have a development order yet? Can you make next?
So typically, when this item is reviewed, it is at time of local reviewed development order, or the development order process. So usually with the district permit, that's when they set the storm elevation and your finished floor for the homes. If they're, and it's important, because when properties are in an X-zone, you know, there is no regulation in terms of how high the pad has to be from a FEMA standpoint.